UBS Sutter dot live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake self-storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at PlumasLakeSelfStorage.com.
Pledge of allegiance, Mr. Seth Simon, Vice President of the Board. Please stand for the pledge. Salute, pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Superintendent Jordan Reeves?
Thank you, President Krittl. Before we begin tonight, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the unexpected passing of an MJUSD employee, a member of our family. On Thursday, October 2nd, we lost Norman Sailor. Norman was one of our bus drivers who worked in our transportation department, faithfully served our district for the past six years, dependable spirit, kindness towards students, unwavering commitment to ensure our students' safe transportation to and from school, loved by all. On behalf of our Board of Education, our entire district community, we extend our deepest condolences to Norman's family, friends, and colleagues. His dedication and care for our students will not be forgotten. I'd like to ask everyone to please join me in a brief moment of silence and norms of memory. Thank you.
Announcements of action taken in closed session. In closed session by a vote of seven to zero, the board approved certificated resolution 2002, five dash 2002, six forward slash nine to reassign employee number 10442. Additionally, the board to report out in closed session by a vote of seven oh, the board approved certification resolution 202, five dash 202, six forward slash 10 to reassign employee 10018. Comments from board members. Mr. Frank Crawford.
Yes, community lost a wonderful man, Bill Simmons. He was supervisor, Air Force veteran. I can't, so many, the Marysville City Council, great man, great friend, and he'll be, thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Gary Krittl. Okay, Stefan Fuer, he's not here. Thank you. Chong Yang. Oliver Taylor. And Seth Simon. Comments from school site representatives. Lynn Hurst High School.
Good evening, MJUSD board members, families, community members. I'm Evelyn Cusser, the Lynn Hurst ASB president. This week at LHS is our homecoming week. Leadership put together a fun dress-up week based off our theme, which is Harry Potter and Aiden Hogwarts. This Friday, the 17th, is homecoming day. During the day, leadership will be putting on our homecoming rally with games, a cheer and football performance, and more. The football game later that day is also senior night for our football players and cheerleaders. The theme for the football game will be Pink Out, which was chosen by our student section club, The Blazer Pit, which has recently been up and running again. During the halftime of the varsity game, the class floats will go around and the homecoming royalty will be presented. Our homecoming dance starts at eight that night as well. For FFA, our chapter is going faster than ever. We currently have 360 FFA members, which is nearly 200 more than last year. In October, our students have been active in several events and activities. Twelve members attended this year a Butz FFA section chili cook-off at Lincoln High School. We held our October FFA meeting with over 120 members present. Thirty students and their families attended our lamb and goat informational meeting for the UBS Sutter Fair with our pig meeting happening next week. FFA president attended the district lead meeting last week. Members enjoyed a cookie decorating contest judged by Mrs. Arroyo Magaña and our act mechanics classics classes built custom plaques for the winners. Today, 18 Greenhand members are attending the California FFA Greenhand Leadership Conference at Gridley High School. And tomorrow, we're partnering with Marysville FFA for a pumpkin painting activity at Bishop's Pumpkin Farm. Interact Club will be hosting our annual Halloween Festival and Haunted House on October 30th. Our festival is free entry and open to anybody. There will be clubs putting on games while selling food and treats. Our haunted house does have an entry fee, but you do not want to miss it. Our students work very hard to put on the haunted house, and we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Marysville Charter of the Academy of the Arts.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Angela May Vidiola, and I am the ASB secretary for Marysville Charter Academy for the Arts. During the last two weeks of September, we had a dragon fest. We had 10 performances from singing, dancing, and studio-led bands. We also had a movie night, so that has happened this week. That has gone from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and we are showing a variety of Halloween-themed movies, such as Monster House to Five Men to Freddy's. We had also had a field trip recently, yesterday, that went to the University of Pacific. Upcoming, we have the Halloween dance, which the senior class will be holding in our quad from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on October 3rd before Halloween. There, we will also be having a Halloween dance party around our dance studio. And also, our Excel club is going to be running an annual fall blood drive on October 24, and will be running throughout the whole day. The company Villant will be hosting this event, and staff and students from 16 years or older will be able to donate from it.
Thank you very much. Marysville High School.
To begin with, I'd like to send our deepest consults from Marysville High School to the member of the Marysville Joint Unified School District, bus driver and member. And then, my name is Joseph Charles, and I'm the ASB president at Marysville High School. Since our last meeting, the school year has continued to be full of positive school climate. We've had numerous events with a lot of engagement and participation. Recent FFA events include, on September 10th, we attended the cattle drive parade. Madison Barber, our chairperson, created a phenomenal float for our members to ride on. This year, we are sending seven American degree applicants to national convention, which is twice as much applicants as years before. On September 17th, members hosted a tri-tip dinner in which we sold over 260 meals that helped fundraise our way to national convention. On September 25th, UBS Sutter Farm Bureau was invited to our chapter meeting to inform our upperclassmen about the scholarship opportunities they offer. On September 26th, we attended Farm Day, which is teaching third graders in our area about the importance of agriculture. And to finish off with recent FFA events, on October 13th, our advisors were awarded the best ag department in the region, followed by several individual awards. To carry on with outside of FFA, Homecoming Week was full of spirit days, royalty, football games, and our new tradition of class backdrop decorating. At the football games, we celebrated our pride in our school by recognizing alumni and crowning our homecoming royalty. The week ended with the dance, which was fun for everyone. We had a dance floor and tables with various activities for students to do if dancing wasn't their favorite, with approximately 350 students attending. In addition to Homecoming Week, we've had a big jump in participation from new club formations. Now we have over 20 clubs on campus. These shifts we made on campus target everyone and make school more enjoyable for every type of student on our campus. With these shifts comes a thanks to our staff. Our September Staff of the Month was Mr. Siler. He's our new principal, but he's already made an impact on campus and proved why he deserved the September Staff of the Month. Mr. Siler is always in a bright cheering mood with everyone and makes campus feel more welcome for everyone. His presence is greatly appreciated, and he's right there. Our October Staff of the Month, it was Miss Gina, is Miss Gina. She's a supportive teacher who truly cares for each and every one of her students. She cares for each of them like if they were one of her own. She's more than a teacher to everyone, and she is greatly appreciated on campus. She's the medalk and sportsman teacher. As we continue the school year, we plan to keep growing our school culture and keep up our school pride. Thank you.
Thank you very much. North and South Lynn Hurst High School.
Good evening, Superintendent, board members, and cabinet. My name is Victor Jimenez, and I'm here to represent South and North Lynn Hurst High School. I would like to start off a recap with the first quarter of the school year. This school year has been packed with activities and opportunities for our students. Currently, we have students that are volunteering at a local elementary school for their fall festival. We have been invited to Linda Oliver's Ella Johnson Park and Cedar Lane. Our students enjoy gaining experience through these events. Our students got a lot, got to learn a lot about the financial responsibilities about, or through a bite of reality simulation through the school's first federal bank. It was a good experience for students to learn about managing money and responsibilities. Our students have been exposed to many career options and are local to our area, that are local to our area. We have our career day and guest speakers from Northwest, Lineman College, UTI, YCOE, Linda Fire, and Public Safety. Lastly, South Lynn Hurst Oliver's location is planning on resuming the mentorship program with Johnson Park Elementary bilingual speakers. We look forward to continuing collaboration with our neighboring schools. Thank you for this opportunity to share in our school activities with you.
Thank you very much. One of the actions taken in closed session was missed, and I'd like to bring that up. With an unanimous vote of seven oh, the board approved a request for continuance hearing regarding EH dash two five dash two six dash one two. Opportunity for employee organizations to address the board, Marysville Unified Teachers Association, Ms. Angela Stegall.
Good evening. Angela Stegall, President for the Marysville Unified Teachers Association. And I will start off with a really good piece of good news. I don't intend to have a lot to say this evening. And I will, on kind of a funny note, because I know they're watching, I will say that part of the reason is my dad has made homemade soup, and so it's rainy and it's cold outside, and so I have something much better waiting outside of here. And then grades after that. So it kind of goes like this, and then like this, is how my evening will go. But just a few things to bring to the board's attention. One is, as usual, to thank our students who get up here and do this. I especially appreciate the fact that we have students up here who probably this is the first and only public speaking they have done, and so this is a heck of a way to get broken into. The idea of public speaking is here, so they do an amazing job, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that the board and the district stand behind that practice and support that. Also, I do want to extend Muta's condolences to the family of Norman Sailor as well. I heard from at least a few teachers saying much the same thing as Mr. Reeves had expressed in his comments, that he was somebody who was dedicated to the students and looked out for them and their safety. And also, Muta's condolences out to Bill Simmons' family as well. That one will be a little harder. So I had known Bill Simmons since I started at the district, because Sandy Simmons was the secretary at Marysville High, but also because my family was born and raised here, and so we all knew Bill. And so Muta would like to extend our condolences to his entire family. Had his granddaughter in class, and so just amazing, community-centered people who continued years after they didn't have anybody going to Marysville High School to support the school and the district as well. Also, just a reminder to everybody, Pink October, so as somebody who had a grandmother who fought the good fight through breast cancer, I'm just a reminder to everybody, support anybody and everybody who has fought the fight, and those that are fighting the fight by wearing pink. And we all know that when you have an extreme fight like that, knowing that you have people in your corner and supporting you is about half the battle, if not more. So support those and wear pink. Also, we just, yesterday, had Indigenous Peoples' Day, and so I just wanted to share a few things, because some of you already know, and a lot of people who know me know, but come from the Cherokee Nation. My great-grandmother was part of the Cherokee Nation in Oklahoma. And so just a few things to put out there that I'm not sure that people know about California and its indigenous people. Right where we are, and actually, kind of this area, we have the Putwin, which are the Southern Winton, the Nissenin, the Maidu, and the Concow tribes that are represented here. And at one point in time in California, we had over 500 indigenous tribes here. And California is now down to approximately 154 tribes. And what's really kind of interesting within that is there are 45 tribes in our state that do not have federal recognition. I'm not going to go into a whole thing about what I think about federal recognition process. You could probably guess, but if you want to know, you can ask me after the meeting. But one of those unrecognized tribes is right here in our community, and they have fought and fought and fought for years, and they are a small tribe, the Strawberry Valley Band of the Pakanyani Maidu. And so Native Americans and indigenous people are known as being strong, resilient people. And I think we need to do all we can to uplift their stories, uplift their struggle, celebrate their triumphs and their successes, to honor them and advocate for them at every chance that we have. But in particular, when we're talking about our local communities, that's another one that hits a little closer to home. And so if you don't know about the struggle of Strawberry Valley Band of Maidu, feel free to ask me. I could tell you a little bit, but there are people in our community and people up at Strawberry Valley who can definitely give you the full story on that. And you will learn a great deal in a very short amount of time, right there, I could tell you that. But any of our tribes, like I said, they're the original stewards of our lands, and they are the people who are still trying to preserve the land for us. So anything we can do to find ways to honor their legacy and their ancestors, their descendants, would definitely be greatly appreciated. So all the advocacy and allyship would be appreciated. Other than that, on the Muta front, please, everybody be careful out there. The roads are already already crazy enough, but now we've added some rain to them, and things are really slick. And we've got some interesting things with pick-up and drop-off at various sites. So anybody within the sound of my voice, if we can all just slow down a little bit, I know as a teacher, yeah, do I like your kid being tardy in my class? No. But if my choice in life is that your kid comes in a few minutes late because everybody slowed down a little bit and made sure that pick-up and drop-off was a little more safe and sane, I will take that any day. And I know that may not make the district real happy to hear me say that out in public, but I think we can all agree. But if people would just be really careful, and especially our students that already drive, they do make me a little nervous and all, but I just want everybody to be safe, especially in this weather and as we get ready for more of it this winter. So, thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Operating Engineers Local Three. California School Employees Association Number 326 and 648. Association of Management and Confidential Employees. Supervisory Unit. Next is public comment. Do we have any public comments tonight? No? Okay. Superintendent update. Superintendent Jordan Reeves?
All right, I have a couple. First of all, I want to thank the Marysville Rotary Club, specifically President Joe Hendricks. Mr. Siler just left, but back in the end of September, Marysville High School principal and myself were invited to attend the Marysville Rotary Club out at Peachtree and accepted a $9,000 donation from the Rotary for a grant that was given to Amanda Books for our homeless student program. Amanda had applied for the scholarship or the grant essentially, and the Rotary Club came through with a big donation to our district. Will certainly impact a number of students in a positive manner. Also, at the end of September, I had the privilege of going out with Gary Krittl. Were able to visit Kynock, McKinney, Linda, and Edgewater, see a lot of really good things going on in the classroom with our teachers and with our staff. And so it was a good day for us. On October 8th, the district with our cabinet put on essentially our first student LEED. I guess we'd call it program, or probably event is a better term. LEED is Leadership, Engagement, Action, and Driven, and it consists of ASB, not only ASB presidents, but students in student government, as well as both our comprehensive high school FFA chapter leaders. We had probably about 30 students there. We're at UBA Gardens. Olive Cabinet was there as well, participating with the students from Charter, Marysville High School, Lynn Hurst, UBA Gardens, Arboga, and McKinney. And it was a short event, but nonetheless a great event. We're looking at replicating that in January as well with that particular group of students. So it was very educational for the district cabinet team and hopefully for our students as well. And then finally, I would like to congratulate two teachers in the district, Constant Franklin at Johnson Park and Joshua Fortato at Lynn Hurst. This Friday, the UC Davis CSTEM Conference, they will be recognized as 2025 Educator Awards' Teacher of the Year, along with a number of other teachers throughout the state. That's at UC Davis again this Friday. So congratulations to Constant Franklin, Constant Franklin, excuse me, and Josh Fortato for being recognized for the great job they do.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to 10.1 approval of September 23rd, 2025 regular board meeting minutes. Board, are there any noted corrections? And if not, do I have a motion to approve? From Mr. Fuer, thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Gary Krittl on a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. 10.2 approval of consent agenda items. We'll now approve the consent agenda items, items 12.1 through 14.7. Board, is there any item that the board would like to pull for further clarification? Okay. If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items 12.1 through 14.7? Motion approved. Mr. Frank Crawford? Thank you. A second by Mr. Oliver Taylor. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 15, New Business Superintendent, 15.1 second read. Approve and adopt the board policies, administrative regulations, and exhibits for sections 1,000, community relations, 5,000 students, and 6,000 instruction. Mr. Gabe Simon and Mr. Bob Beckert to present.
Good evening, Board. We're here for the second read of our board policies, the 1,000s, the 5,000s, and the 6,000s. Again, these adjustments were made through CSBA recommendations based on current education code. Do you have any questions about any?
No questions? Not at this time? Yeah, so, so in that case, I'd like to have a motion to approve. Mr. Crawford has a motion on the floor to approve. Do I have a second? Second, Mr. Taylor? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to 17.1, New Business. Approve the updated job description. Pupil Services Secretary, Mr. Gabe Simon to present.
Thank you. This is an updated job description, existing position, so no budget increase. This will allow us to service both the wellness aspects of pupil services and the special education aspects of pupil services. There's a vacancy with that position. We had an employee move out of the district to a position elsewhere. And so again, it's just updated job description before we post it.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Simon from the board? Not at this time? Then can I get a motion to approve? Mr. Gary Krittl, motion on the floor to approve. Do I have a second? Mr. Crawford has a second on the floor. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, seven oh. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, everyone. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is October 28th, 2025. This meeting is now adjourned.
UBS Sutter dot live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake self-storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at PlumasLakeSelfStorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of UBS Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of UBS Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of UBS Sutter and Nevada Counties. Each week, local governments and schools make important decisions that have short-term and long-term impacts on our community and quite possibly on you. UBS Sutter dot live makes it easier for you to know what's going on. We livestream up to four local government meetings every Tuesday, important special meetings, Oliver's Public Utility District's months of Thursday meetings, and town halls. To make it easier for you, we pull out informative sections and present them individually. For your information, our new series that posts Wednesdays, right here on UBS Sutter dot live. Subscribe to our YouTube channel, like and follow our Facebook page so you know when we're live and when we posted something new. new. For your information, local government meetings made shorter, posting Wednesdays here on UBS Sutter dot live.